Going to bring to order the regularly scheduled board meeting for the August 13, 2019, written to Board of Trustees if I can have a motion to go into executive session.
I move to recess public session. We need a legacy for the purpose of discussion of the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Everybody raise your right hand. And the motion passes seven zero. Did it go off? We just came back from executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. At this time, we will have the, we will do the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance. And for the inspirational moment, I'll ask us just to take a moment of silence, please. Do the pledge of allegiance now.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and if I can have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shad.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for the August 13, 2019, agenda.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. We'll now move on to item 5 dot 1, special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Ms. Libby Ruth coming before us this evening to share the special recognitions for the August 13, 2019, school board meeting. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Chairman Manning, and board members. I believe Ms. Mackey, you want to join us to help give out certificates? I think that it's very fitting that we start tonight's meeting off, one week before schools off, school starts, by celebrating our, some accomplishments of our employees in our schools. And because there's no better way to inspire success than to recognize success. And so here we are tonight, we're going to recognize many of our employees and one of our schools, and I can't think of a better way than to inspire students and for them to see the people they see day in and day out at their schools getting recognized and pursuing their pathway to premier. So we are going to begin with LaShay Williams from Condor Elementary. LaShay, will you come on forward along with your principal, Ms. Paula China? Ms. Williams has been named a South Carolina ASCD Emerging Leader. This is a prestigious designation created to develop and support the next generation of leaders. The South Carolina Emerging Leader Program is comprised of an accomplished group of educators, typically within five to 15 years of experience, who desire to become more involved in our state's educational community. LaShay, who was last, who last year was named an Honorable Teacher of the Year for our district Teacher of the Year process, is a single gender teacher, is a teacher in a single gender boys' classroom. If you were to visit her classroom for a day, it would be immediately apparent the relationships that have been built and a routine that has been in place and mastered to the point where the boys could run things on their own. From their morning meetings, that's impressive, I have a fourth grader, he can't run much on his own, from their morning meetings to the in-depth conversation during Socratic Seminar, her students are owning their learning and classroom responsibilities. Emerging leaders are passionate and committed to the whole child, a belief that every child in South Carolina deserves to be healthy, safe, supported, challenged, and engaged. And LaShay also spent the summer over in Africa, I believe, working with students over there. So her commitment goes well beyond the day she's here, and we thank her and appreciate all that she does. Next up, we have Jennifer McLeod Crady and her principal, Dr. Brenda MacFauxworth. If they will please come forward. Jennifer is the Magnet Director of the Institute of Health Science at Ridgeview High School, and she's appropriately dressed for that, I love that, modeling her Ridgeview attire. Dr. Mac's coming up. Jennifer has been recognized as the Teacher of the Year from the South Carolina Academy of Science. The SCAS Teacher of the Year Award recognizes excellence in teaching based on recommendations from colleagues and students, samples of teacher evaluations from the last three years, and evidence of direct directing research and mentoring students. Jennifer has taught a variety of engaging science courses for more than 16 years. Her background in environmental science and natural resource management provides a novel platform for innovation and application in and beyond the classroom. Her problem-based learning activities supplemented with field labs and modern technology serve the varied learning pathways that exist in our 21st century students. She is viewed as a teacher leader and routinely collaborates with her colleagues, develop highly effective learning environments. She says her goal is to create the learning environment where students interact and explore, explore the nature of science instead of just Googling an answer and memorizing content. Congratulations on a great award. Dr. Mac, you want to stay up here? Go ahead and get in that routine, we're starting a new year, you just hang tight. We're going to bring up Dr. David Degenhart. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest honor bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 STEM teaching. Dr. Degenhart is consideration for this top honor as he has recently been named a state finalist. His application now goes on to the National Science Foundation for review. The award recognizes teachers who have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. David scored excellent in all five areas that were judged, including mastery of content appropriate for the grade level taught, leadership and education outside the classroom, and effective use of student assessments to evaluate, monitor, and improve student learning. We will be rooting for you as you continue on in the national contest, but we're already so very proud of you and congratulate you. Now I'd like to ask Nona Mantoya from our Operations Department, along with her supervisor, Will Anderson, Executive Director of Operations, to please come forward. Nona has received the 2019 Olive Tea Ritchie Educational Office Professional of the Year from the National Association of Education Office Professionals. This is their highest award at the national level. Nona is a Richland, is Richland 2's mail coordinator extraordinaire, and since 2005 has made sure that mail is delivered on time and accurately to the district offices and all schools and centers, as well as through the United States Postal Service. She has improved the efficiency of mail operations resulting in cost savings to the district. As an educational office professional, Nona has provided assistance and support to thousands of students and staff members by overseeing the issuing of identification badges. In addition, she is involved in school district and community activities and is constantly striving to learn and grow in her profession. Nona has served as the President of the Richland County Association of Education Office Professionals, as a Director for the State Association, and has served on national committees as well. In her nomination, she is described as a great leader and an equally awesome follower and team player. She is the epitome of what an office professional should be: competent, confident, dedicated, and always poised and professional. Hold tight, we're going to let you stay up there. Mr. Anderson, you can stay. We're going to ask some of your colleagues to come forward. Just stay right there, trust me, we're good. We're going to recognize Susan Laurie, but she was not able to be here tonight, so her supervisor, Katina Davis, with Chief, the Chief Instructional Support Services Officer will come forward for her. And then Mandy Miller from Muller Road Middle was also not able to be here, but her principal, Mr. Sean Bishden, decked out in a tie today, which she would point out to me. If you'll come on up and accept for her. These ladies have completed the requirements and have earned recertification as educational office professionals. Recertification must be done every five years. The Professional Standards Program is the only national certification program for educational office professionals and was established to encourage them to grow professionally. It is designed as a series of levels based on education, experience, and professional activities. We thank you for your dedication to improving your gifts and talents in your area of work, and we congratulate you on this achievement. Now we have the educational office professionals who have earned the professional certification for the first time. Would Lynn Booker from Joseph Kill's Elementary and your principal, Ms. Alvera Butler, please come forward? Jennifer, and I have practiced this name all day, and I'm going to get it wrong, I'm sure, but Jennifer Diarmid and Becky Fields from Finance, Jennifer and Becky, come on forward along with your supervisor, Dr. Harry Miley. Hope Eddy from Human Resources, and would Karen Lovett please come forward with Hope? Heather Faya from Center for Knowledge and her supervisor, Jessica Agi. Keisha Mickel from Lonnie B. Nelson Elementary and Principal Ms. Karen Beeman. Tamika Sherman, who's the Assistant to the Board Trustees, and so, Mr. Manning, would you like to come stand with Tamika? Continuing education of educational office professionals is essential in coping with rapidly changing conditions in the profession. We are so proud of how many certified educational office professionals we have in the district. As we stated with Nona Mantoya, this requires completing a series of test based on education, experience, and professional activities. And I believe Richland 2 continues to be a leader in the number of educational office professionals that earn this certification across the nation. So we congratulate you and are very proud of all you do to extend your talents. Now we're going to shift our attention to one of our schools, Pontiac Elementary School, and which has received national recognition. Would Principal Katie Barber come up with her group, Julie Whitney and Michelle Hawkins, who were the Lighthouse co-facilitators, along with administrators Deanna Savage, Jessie Williams, and Molly Robbins? As you can see, we have a whole contingent from Pontiac Elementary, and we are going to get a big group photograph on the steps outside, and I'm going to ask y'all to stand in just a minute. So let me tell you what Pontiac has done. They have earned, at the end of last school year, got a big surprise, and earned Leader in Me Lighthouse School Certification. The Leader in Me is a whole school transportation, transformation model developed in partnership with educators. It teaches 21st century leadership and life skills to students and creates a culture of student empowerment based on the idea that every child can be a leader. In order to achieve this impressive goal, Pontiac had to assemble a lighthouse team, create a leadership environment, teach and reinforce the seven habits, work together collaboratively, have students in meaningful leadership roles, involve parents, create and hold leadership events, and much, much more, as if that's not enough. Findings from the Leader in Me program show that Pontiac students see themselves as leaders. 100% of students have leadership roles in classrooms, 68% hold school-wide leadership roles, and 100% of staff members are on action teams. The school was commended for achieving positive school and student outcomes, as well as having an extraordinary impact on staff, students, parents, and the greater community. Would the entire Pontiac contingent please stand, and let's congratulate them on this great accomplishment? Now I'm going to ask Mr. Manning to come forward along with Dr. Davis. Thank you, Tony, I'm not doing a good job. Absolutely. Because we're going to recognize two board members, so we want the board to be up here as we recognize them. If you've been to a meeting before where we've done this, we have recognized our board members who go back to school and take classes to be better board members. And we have two tonight that have reached levels of accomplishment in that institute. It's the Boardman, Boardmanship Institute that is sponsored by the South Carolina School Boards Association. And we have Dr. Teresa Holmes is reaching, has reached Level 2, and she's receiving a certificate and a silver pin. And Ms. Mackey has reached Level 5, and that also includes a certificate and a pin with a special redstone, we're going to say that's a ruby, ruby stone, is that right? I'm sure it's real. For those who are not familiar with, the Boardmanship Institute offers year-round training focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. Board members can achieve up to six levels of recognition by earning points for participating in statewide conferences, completing training on-site in their own district. The Boardmanship Institute helps board members develop skills, stay abreast of education issues, and attend workshops focused on school law, advocacy, and legislation. We thank you for your service, your commitment, and your hard work, and congratulate you on your success. Pontiac folks, if y'all want to come outside, everyone else is here for awards.
All right, we'll give everybody just a minute to move on to bigger and better things. All right, board members, item 6 dot 1, if I can have a motion for the approval of our consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for August 13, 2019.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I take a point of privilege at this moment?
Absolutely.
I'm going to embarrass my son. I like my son. Thank you, Austin, wave to everybody, Austin. That's my son, Austin, he came out to see his mom tonight. Love you.
You can get me later for letting that happen, yeah. All right, we next have item 7 dot 1, our public participation. I've got two folks signed up. We will first have Mr. Gus Philpott, if he'll come to the mic.
I'm running out of my time tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. And we also have Mr. Lawrence, Terry Lawrence, right?
Coach Terry.
Lawrence, Coach Terry, come on. Coach Terry. We, you get, yeah, we got you.
Just recently, I was elected to be the, I was down in Charleston at the annual meeting, and we had the, I was voted to be the VP for Track and Field, 4A, Cross Country, and Track and Field. So during that time, I realized that, I took time to notice that we get a lot of certifications and things of that nature, all coaches in our district. I think in the whole state, you got to get a heat illness, sudden cardiac arrest, it's another one on, I think, bullying or something of that nature. But my main concern is that although we're signing these documents saying that we're getting these certifications and we know what to do in these emergency crises, a lot of the schools, not just north, not just, I'm at Northeast, but not just District 2, statewide, I talked to a lot of different coaches and I asked them, I said, hey, do y'all have a AED, you know, at your track or at your field or wherever it's at? Nah, no, we don't. And then most of the, most of the answers that most of you all would know is that they'll say our trainer has one. And I said, well, is the trainer at the field with y'all? No, well, we can call him. And just for y'all that don't know, we had two people in our district last year suffer a sudden cardiac arrest, and I was one of them. I was one, and one was a student in our school. Even though it wasn't on campus, it can happen at any time. So I just wanted to bring awareness that we need to look at these things that we're being told and accepted that we do. Like, we just started this CPR stuff, and I brought that to the attention of some people years ago, like, hey, y'all got me signing this document saying I'm CPR certified? I'm not, I'm not. I don't want people looking at the coach and the parents looking at the coach, like, the coach can do it. But now, everybody in the state is CPR and AED certified, but everybody don't have enough AEDs. Spring Valley, if the track team is down there, and I'm going to call it a dome, on the, in the dome and the trainer is there, and somebody on the soccer field fall out or the tennis court, every minute counts, every single minute counts, and they're not going, I mean, I seriously doubt they're going to make it there. Cold tubs, if somebody gets overheated, we have cold tubs, but one, schools don't have enough cold tubs, don't know where they're at, and then along with the cold tubs, everybody, you got to have ice. How many ice machines, y'all think, whatever, whatever school your children or you work at have? Northeast has one in the age building. I don't know the layout of Spring Valley, Blythe, or the region near the other schools, but we just need to take a look at that, and I'm willing to talk in private, but I'm going to bring this to the awareness statewide, because again, I am a sudden cardiac arrest survivor, and our kids and staff members, this can happen to anybody, can fall out and we don't have the resources to take care of them, and that's just sad. But again, it's just knowledge, because some people just don't know this.
Coach Terry, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity for you to speak. At this time, we'll move on to item 8 dot 1, and I believe Dr. Miley said there's no legislative update today? Thank you. That'll make the meeting that much shorter. Item 9 dot 1, and 9 dot 2, if I can please have a motion on item 9 dot 2, Superintendent's Evaluation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Ms. Shad.
After reviewing Dr. Davis's report on the district's progress and considering the board member's comments regarding Dr. Davis's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Davis receive an overall distinguished evaluation for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? And motion passes seven zero. Congratulations, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my board for such a favorable evaluation for the 2019, 2018, 2019 school year, but I would be remiss if I did not pass on those congratulations to our teachers, our administrative staff, our executive staff, and our community, as well as our board for your, for the outstanding leadership and efforts that it takes to have a premier year as we had last year. So thank you to all of those who contributed to that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And pursuant to the evaluation, we also have a motion on the contract. If I can have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, as a result of Dr. Davis's overall distinguished evaluation, I move that we authorize you to execute, to execute an amendment to Dr. Davis's contract with the district, the terms of which were reviewed and discussed with the board during executive session, which provides for, among other things, an extension of his contract for two years through June 20th, June, June 30th, I'm sorry, 2023, an additional 12.3% increase in his annual salary effective July 1, an additional 2.5% increase to his annuity each year for the next five years, beginning with the annuity payment in September 2020, all of which will continue to be contingent on a satisfactory evaluation during the school year immediately prior to the annual contribution, and a supermajority vote of the board required for action pursuant to Section 11D of the contract.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elka Johnson?
Yes. First, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Davis. Thank you for all that you've done. However, I would not be supporting this contract due to the fact that, as a board, we were not allowed an opportunity to discuss this matter. We were polled by the chair, he made a phone call, and he polled the board prior to, so I will not be supporting this. There are many things on the contract that I do support, and there's one item that I do not support. So because the board will not allow us to pull one item out, I'm going to have to decline the entire contract. So I want to publicly apologize to you, Dr. Davis, because I support 75% of your contract. There is only one item that I had an issue with, and that is the supermajority, and because the board has refused to allow us to pull that out, my vote tonight will be a no. Thank you.
Dr. Holmes?
Congratulations, Dr. Davis. I'm very proud of you. As I spoke with you earlier, I am going to support the contract because I believe everything that's, is great on the contract except for one portion of the contract, and as Dr. Elka said, we could not pull that particular part out. I am not in agreement with the five-vote contract for, I think we, we have a vote of four for everything else that we do. We have a vote for four for teachers and all other policies. I do not support a vote of five for the removal of a superintendent. Dr. Davis, I have no intentions of removing you, so let's just get that straightened out. I love you, and I think you're a great superintendent, but I think when we make policies, we can't make policies just for one specific person. I think we have to make policies that extend beyond that particular item. So this is no reflection of you. I think you're a great superintendent. I am going to support the contract because the majority actually ruled on this, but I wanted to publicly say that, no, I am not in favor of the five vote. That is just my personal opinion, because I do not think that the public has voted for us to allow that type of situation to go. If four is the vote for everything else, four should be the vote for that also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Any other discussion? Ms. Agostini?
Mr. Chair, I too support Dr. Davis and his efforts, but along with the other two, I am unable to support the power, the new contract based upon the supermajority vote, and I also have a concern about setting precedent- And I also have a concern about setting presidents with such a large salary increase. Thank you.
Other discussion? Just one point of clarity, I want to make sure we're voting on the contract. There's not a change in policy. I just want to make sure that we're clear, because I heard that word used a couple times, just to make sure we're clear. And also, for the public's sake, just want everybody to know, we did have the opportunity to discuss this as a board in executive session on more than one occasion before coming to the final decision. So with that, I will now take the vote.
Mr. Chair.
We're ready for the.
Yes, but I'd like to make a comment. We did not have an opportunity as a board to discuss salary or any other concerns. We had an opportunity as a board to express our concerns only to the chair. Thank you.
And with that, we'll take the vote, please. Motion passes 5 to 2. Congratulations again, Dr. Davis. And the staff that make them look good. Thank y'all. All right, next on our agenda, we have, sorry, item 10.1, or 10, old business action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have before you the following items. I believe you have a motion that has been shared with you, asking for the approval of the revisions for Section G policies. That will be GBEBB, GBEBDA, GC, GD, QD, GBI, GBJ, GB, GA, GBGD, GDA, GDB, and GBEC. These are all policies where you receive, the first draft was provided on 6/26/19. Second draft was provided on 7/18/19, and the first reading was done on 7/23/19.
Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions? I think Ms. Gregory is here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Mackey.
Is that right?
Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve policies, policy revisions as presented initially on July 23rd to policy GBEBB, policy GBEC, policy revisions to GBEBDA, policy GC, policy GD, QD, policy GBI, policy GBJ, policy GBGA, policy GBGD, policy GDA, and policy GDB.
And also, policy GBEC?
I said that, it was out of sequence.
At the beginning, okay.
I did say that, I said that.
Can you say that two times real fast?
I cannot.
If I can, if I can have a.
I cannot.
If I can have a second to that motion.
Second.
Seconded by, seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
On, uh, policy GBI, under political activities, I would like, do I ask for a friendly amendment to change, uh, the word, it states including advocating any political party or any candidate? I'd like to change it to read including advocating for any political party or candidate. Add the use, or include the word for. On policy GBGA.
Can we, yeah, let's.
Do we do it one at a time?
Yeah, let's just do one at a time. And if you'll, now that it's on the screen, can you just repeat that? I'm sorry.
Policy GBI, under political activities in schools, the second paragraph to include the word for in the statement that says including advocating any political party or any candidate. Change it to read including advocating for any political party or candidate.
If I could respond to your request for a friendly amendment, I know that the Senate stands correct as it is, advocating any political policy or advocating for, so.
It doesn't say political policy. It says political party.
Political party, it does say that. But it stand, the sentence is grammatically correct as it is, so that what you'd like is a grammatical preference.
It is grammatical.
It's not grammatically unsound, though, so it's a grammatical preference to insert for. I'm fine, I'm just asking if it's a grammatical.
Then it would be a grammatical preference for reading.
It's not.
Ms. Agostini, you've, are you, you're making the motion for that change?
Yes.
Okay, motions were made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The motion's already been made.
And a second.
I think, and seconded, and I think Mrs. Agostini asked that this be a friendly amendment. So I believe Robert's rules only allows Ms. Mackey to accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, so the, it's up to Ms. Mackey.
I'm the maker of the motion. I'm happy to accept that friendly amendment, just with the, with the clarification that this sentence is not grammatically unsound. It's just a grammatical preference. But I'm happy to allow for your friendly amendment, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you.
Okay, so motions were made by Ms. Mackey with the friendly amendment. Mr. Shad, you're still good with your second? Or Ms., I'm sorry, Dr. Caution Parker?
Yes.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I have a question. If we're gonna prove this motion that's been made with all of these policies, we've got another grammatical error.
How many more do you have?
I have one more grammatical error.
Okay, go ahead and present it.
Okay, and policy GBGA, first line, it says the district will not initially hire any person to work in, in the district. And my recommendation, friendly amendment, would be to delete one of the ins.
And Ms. Agostini actually provided this information beforehand. I'm happy to allow for the friendly amendment.
Okay, so with the motion and the second and the friendly amendments, there's no further discussion. We'll have the vote at this time.
What, Mr. Chair, are we gonna go one by one? Because I have a few questions on some of the policies, and normally, we put them up and ask if anyone have any discussion.
So we're doing discussion now, if you have discussion.
Right, but not on that policy, on a different one, so just go to the ones that have.
Right, so we're just, the motions only for that section of policies is your question within that section of policies?
Yes, 10.7. And I think my, who's standing here for this? Okay, yes. My question is, I know this was the policy that we had concerns about whether or not the principal or the designee will be, designee will be allowed to go through personnel files. So we have removed that from this policy?
No, ma'am, we have not. There, we have not. There was no motion to move and strike that from the policy. It was just discussions about whether or not it should exist, but no motion was made to strike that language from the policy.
Okay, and I was asking that question because I don't see it here. So I'm not sure if I have the wrong policies in front of me.
Ma'am, I think it's on the second page, under general access to a personnel file.
Okay, where?
Um, under the bullet says general access to a personnel file.
Thank you. I did not see that. So I would like to make an amendment that we remove employee, school principal, or immediate supervisor being able to go in a personnel file unless HR has created some type of system or checkout form where if the principal has to go into someone's personnel file, they have to include the date, the purpose of going in that file, and also having it checked off by HR or HR designee, and the time that they return the file back to the personnel cabinet.
So you're asking for that to be a friendly amendment to the.
Yes, yes, I am.
Just a point of clarification. Would that not be a procedural thing, Dr. Davis? I know that we're exacting policy, but would that not be procedural? I'm asking the question.
No, that would be a change to the policy. That would not be a procedural administrative rule or a practice. That would be a change to the policy.
And once again, let me just say this. I know that we have awesome principals in our school district. It's no reflection of principals, but I do know, and I have seen before, where principals will look at someone's personnel file and will use that against them. And I don't want that to happen. So I just think that if we allow the principals to go into that file, I think it should be some kind of check-in and checkout system to ensure that they're going in there doing exactly what they said their purpose is, it's being signed off, and then it's being returned.
Ms. Mackey has to accept that friendly amendment.
I do, I do have a question, actually, since we're having discussion. What's the, what's the process now? What's the procedure now? If we're asking for a different procedure, what's the procedure that's in place now? I don't know.
Administrators have access to personnel files of all those, supervisors have personnel files, access to the personnel files of all of those whom they supervise, if it's their personnel record. If it's a health part of their personnel file, then they do not have access to that.
That's what I want to be sure about. I don't want to change the, I don't want to change the policy as it is, but if it, but if the policy fails, I'm happy to entertain another motion. I just don't want to get into the particulars of anybody's HR files.
All right, and that's the right of the person making the motion. Dr. Holmes, did you have another comment?
I do have another comment. I, I was looking at this policy, and I'm a little concerned, again, about the, it says on here, those schools, school officials involved in the evaluation process or the supervision of the individual. So now, not only are we saying that the principal and supervisor has the opportunity to look at a personnel file, but if I'm sitting on an evaluation team, which is how it's done in a school, then those, why would the evaluation team have any need to look at my personnel file? Because then I think that would make the evaluation that they're currently doing prejudiced. Am I reading that, or am I misreading that?
I don't know.
But it says, but all due respect, it says involved, involved in the evaluation process. And that sometimes, in, in the evaluation, in adept or whatever you're using, it, there is more, there are people that come in, there are other teachers that may be coming in to evaluate another teacher. And it's saying, how it reads is involved in the evaluation process. So that means you're allowing other people to also look, how it's reading right there. It's saying that you're allowing other people to look at their evaluations in their file. And if you're doing an evaluation on a person, I think you're gonna, I don't think that you have any business going back and looking into their file to do their current evaluation.
That is not a practice.
I know it's not a practice, but what it says on here would make it a policy. So that's why I'm saying we have to address it, because we can't go by practices, because what will happen is, then someone will say that they have the right to be able to look at the file. I think we need to scratch that part about involved in the evaluation process. I don't think if you're involved in somebody's, and you're not their supervisor, which we're keeping that, and you're, and you're not, you're not their supervisor, and the person evaluating has no business looking at your personnel file.
Dr. Holmes, are you recommending another friendly amendment to the?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to see the, involved in the evaluation, those involved, school officials involved in the evaluation process, because that's more than just your supervisor. I'd like to see that striked out.
Second.
That's not something we can second. It's up for Ms. Mackey as the motion maker to accept the friendly amendment or not.
Help me, Dr. Davis, is it possible to have an administrative rule that addresses the procedures that are, that have been, that have been addressed here?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, we can create administrative rules to address how we conduct evaluations or who has access, or limited access, or who's granted full access to a company's policy.
Is it possible for us to, after administrative rule is, is crafted or amended, is it possible for us to get, to see that?
Administrative rule is not a policy, so it is not something that's a votal.
Oh, I know it's not a voteable action, but is it possible for us to see, to see what you come up with?
Absolutely, absolutely. Before it's completed, you can see it in its draft form.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Ms. Mackey, do you accept the friendly amendment, or freckling?
I don't. I want to see, I want to see, no, I want to see the procedures that, that are of concern and sort of in an administrative rule, so that administration can go through and make sure that all of i's are dotted and all t's are crossed with regard to anyone's files.
Okay, so at this time, we have the original motion plus the friendly amendments to remove the double ins on the one policy and add the four to the other, which is where we are, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Ms. Agostini.
Now, I, I believe that this leads us into a predicament when we pull all these policies together, and I'm going to struggle accepting all these other policies or passing them simply because we have to, I don't agree with one of the 10 policies and what's being stated. I do not want to wait for the administrative rule in order to support this policy. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, that, just as a personal point of privilege, that we have had the policies. We've had first reading, opportunity for feedback, and of course, we do have the opportunity as a board to still discuss changes, but we have had opportunity for those changes to be presented in advance.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Can I call on both of you at the same time? All right, Ms. Agostini, finish your thought.
As related to this policy specifically, when I received my board docs, what I am looking at now was in fact not what was sent to me on board docs. And I just received this, I believe, yesterday when I reviewed it and sent to Dr. Davis a screenshot of what was sent to me initially. So this was not, I just had this yesterday. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Elkin Johnson.
Mr. Chair, that's what I was going to say. That's why I asked that question about the principal, because the policy that we have now, that we're getting ready to vote on, was not the policy that was sent to us a week ago. And that's why I asked the question, because I noticed that principal or immediate supervisor was removed and now is back. And that's why I was totally confused about that. And I totally agree with Mrs. Agostini. If we lump all these policies into one, it's going to put us in a situation where we may support eight of the 10, or seven of the 10, and then we're gonna have to vote, one vote for all policies. I think we need to go back to a practice of each individual policy and allow us an opportunity to discuss that policy and to vote on it. I don't think it's fair to our teachers. We're always talking about, we're here for teachers. I don't think it's fair to our teachers. I don't think it's fair to our parents. I don't think it's fair to district office. I don't think it's fair to the community that we would lump 10 and 15 policies into one and then say, vote yes, vote no, or abstain. That is just ridiculous. And we should not do that. If we say that we're here for the people, then we need to be here for the people.
Dr. Holmes.
Again, I agree with Ms. Agostini and Dr. Elkins. I'm concerned about this one particular policy here. I don't have an issue with all the other nine or whatever it is. So maybe we could amend the motion to pull out this one particular policy and vote on the other policy. Would that be a friendly amendment, to Ms. Mackey?
I'm happy to accept that. Dr. Holmes, I'm happy to accept that amendment.
Okay, so just to be clear, we now have a motion on the table for all policies.
I can restate it.
If you, yes, if you would please restate it.
It's for all the policies except that are listed in the Section G, with the exception of, with allowing for two friendly amendments as presented. And the exception will be policy GBJ. I'm happy to pull that out, and we can vote on that separately.
Okay, so that's the motion. Dr. Caution Parker, with all that, can I just get your reaffirmation that you still second the motion? Will you speak into the mic for me?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any further discussion? We'll take the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one more question. This is just a question for clarification. And policy GBGD, let me pull that up. It's the second sentence. And I'm not sure that I quite understand it, but volunteers who are not employees are exceptions to this policy. Can you explain that to me? Why would that be included in this policy? The workers' compensation policy.
So, 10.9.
It's policy GBGD. GD, thank you. 10.9, and she's referring to the second sentence. I'm just looking for an explanation why we would have to put that in there.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm not as well-versed as these as Ms. Williams is. But as far as volunteers in the community, and can you speak to that a little bit better?
These would just be volunteers that are not employees, would not be eligible for our workers' comp program. They're not employees.
Well, I understand that. So why would anybody ever think that a volunteer would be eligible for workers' compensation?
Because they might.
Because, yeah. If they fall and hurt themselves on school property.
That just because you're a volunteer and on our campus, you're not eligible for our workers' comp program.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's obvious, but some of the time I have to.
It seems obvious. It seems obvious to me, but, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a point of clarity.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
We're going 10.1 to 10. what? Because I have a few more, but I'm not sure if that's a part of the first group.
It's all the policies that are listed under Section G, which would be 10.1 down to 10.11.
With the exception of?
With the exception, yes, with the exception of?
10.7.
Absolutely.
Then we're going to come back to the other policies, like the one on 10.22 and 23?
Correct. We have not gotten there yet, yes. Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll take the vote at this time. And motion passes seven to zero. Do I have another motion on item 10.7?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove, let me go back and pull it up. If you guys can pull it up there for me. I'd like to make a motion that we add that when a principal needs to go into a personnel file, there will be a check-in and checkout system, and also signed by the HR director or designated. And also, I would like to include, well, Dr. Holmes.
Yes.
Your?
I wanted to take out the sentence, let me get back to it. "School, those school officials involved in the evaluation process."
And would like to remove school officials involved in the evaluation process unless they are administrator.
Correct.
Or district office staff.
Correct.
Okay, so your motion is to remove, is to make the one addition and the one subtraction from the policy that you just stated, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Are there any questions or comments? With no questions or comments, and again, the motion is just for the amendment to the policy, if I can please have the vote for those amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
Point of clarification, and I don't know if Dr. Elkins Johnson had a chance to look and see if, that is exactly what her motion is, but I think it's important that we stress it. You're not, Dr. Elkins Johnson, saying remove school officials. You're saying remove school officials that are not principals, correct?
Correct.
So we're specifically voting for that, saying that as long as they are principals, it's fine.
Correct.
Okay.
Or district office staff.
Or district office staff.
Yes, will be the superintendent, the cabinet.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, in that case, I'll place my vote.
Yeah, if we can.
We have to add that.
You have to add that to the policy.
If we can make sure that the motion is accurate.
Yeah.
It won't show, okay. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on, though, before we finalize?
So with this policy, there wouldn't be a need for an administrative rule with regard to the administrator, the superintendent's administrative staff? Is that correct?
That's?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have that. Dr. Davis.
Just as this motion reads right now, that has been approved, I may be misinterpreting this, but at this point, that means assistant principals do not have access to personnel files or records of teachers that may be under the direct supervision. So an API, for example, would not be able to review a teacher's past, any records relating to that teacher's performance in the classroom. Only the principal will have the authority to be able to do that along with the district, along with district staff, and district staff consists of multiple people. So district staff is not defined, so we probably would need an administrative rule to go along with that to define those types of things. District staff is very broad, is a very broad statement, and that can consist of anyone who's not academically connected to the performance of a teacher. So just as a?
I think I share district staff being your cabinet.
Yeah, I think there may be a lack of clarity on the, yeah, I think there was a lack of clarity on exactly. In order to make sure.
No, if we can just insert district office cabinet instead of staff, then that is my motion.
Well, I know we just took a motion and voted on it, but I think that I'll, based off what you're saying and what's up there, it did not all come together well for me. I mean, we passed it, so.
I just want to state on the record, this makes it a very difficult, very difficult policy when it comes to the evaluation and the review of teacher performance from an administrative perspective. And as I look at the faces of some of my building-level administrators that are out there, I just want to make, I just want to state that for the record, for the board, to be patient as we are evaluating teachers as a result of the change in this practice.
Mr. Chair.
The chair.
Can I just ask one point of clarification before we go on? Dr. Davis, we vote, we made an amendment to the policy, we have not voted the policy yet. No, we made an amendment, we didn't vote on, we didn't vote the actual, we asked for an amendment to the policy. We still have to vote on the policy with the amendment, which we have not done. So if we vote down the policy, what does that mean?
Well, can I add something?
I just want to ask a point of clarification.
The original, the original policy.
Then I'll come back to people.
The original policy remains in place as presented by administration.
Okay, so I have Mr. Shad and then Dr. Elkins Johnson.
If I may take just a little bit of clarification for you, if you limit that to the district office cabinet, that means I am not on the cabinet, I cannot have any access to the files, nor can Michelle Taylor Brown, who is the Director of Teacher Quality, so she cannot provide any assistance and coaching to our principals because she would not be allowed to review the files.
Mr. Shad wants me to speak first. Let me be clear on something. When we're talking about teacher personnel files, there is no reason why an assistant principal absolutely need to go into a district personnel file. If an assistant principal has a concern, which I have been an assistant principal for many years, then I take that concern to my principal, and then my principal has an opportunity to go into that file, see what's going on, and share it with their cabinet. There is no reason. And also, HR is a part of being able to go on files. I think that was part of the policy from beginning, said HR, HR staff, and remove, and we're adding the add-in and the checkout system. So there's no reason why an assistant principal has to go into someone's personnel file. No reason.
Dr. Davis, could we consider bringing this policy back with what we believe the?
Well, I've already placed a motion on. You can't do that. I've already placed a motion.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, if you would please let me just finish, because I'm asking for your revision to be put into the policy to bring back for a vote. I'm asking if the district staff could write the policy the way you've asked it to be written, brought back to us to vote on this policy in whole?
No, because on all policies, when we make revisions, we make it tonight and we vote on it.
Okay.
So this is no different than any other policy that we've made changes and revisions to, and we take the vote that same night.
Dr. Holmes.
I just want to make a little bit of clarity. I absolutely agree with Dr. Elkins. This is, this should not impede anyone from looking in a file that's a person's direct supervisor. But assistant principals do not have any reason to go into a person's personnel file. They're not their direct supervisor. So why would you allow someone that's not someone's direct supervisor to go into their personnel file? Because that, no one in here would want them to do that on your job. That means everybody else has access to your information. The principal, who is the supervisor and the direct supervisor, has a charge not to share all types of information that is personal to a person's background. We do not need to open up a, we're not trying to hold anybody's hands, and I know that I am, because I've worked in education so long, I know how this works. We do not need to have everybody's personal business open for access to everybody. You only, and if not only just that, it bothers me because of the evaluation portion. If you're going, a person may have done terrible on evaluation somewhere else, and then they come to a new school and they have a new principal, and then you evaluate, and they've been a good shining star, and then you go look in their file and the other person says, "Oh, they were terrible," this and that. A lot of people can overcome that, but that may taint somebody's attitude about a person. We say that we're supposed to be doing evaluations to evaluate people fairly, and that's exactly what we should be doing. The supervisor should be the only person that has access, the district office has access, personnel has access, and that can be written in what you said, Dr. Davis, but as a policy, no. I do not agree that assistant principals and other people who are just working, and also, let's go further, because what is not being said here is too, when you do a teacher's evaluation, not only is it the principal and assistant principal that does the evaluation, it is also other teachers that do evaluations on other teachers. So now, if you're saying they have access to the file, are you allowing these other teachers to look at their file also? This is too, this is not what you should be doing, in my opinion. It should be the supervisor, and then if there's anything that needs to be disseminated down to everybody else, the supervisor should do it. That's my point on that, and that's my clarity on that.
Can I please have a motion on what we want to do with this policy to give final approval, or to table, or some other option?
Mr. Manning.
Yes, ma'am.
I have already made my motion, and my motion has already been?
Dr. Elkins Johnson, your motion was for an amendment to the policy that's passed. I'm asking now to give final approval to the full policy.
I would like to make a motion to add a check-in, checkout procedure for fellows.
Dr. Elkins, that's already done. I'm asking now for, we have to, you, your motion amended the policy per the board vote. We now have to approve the policy in its totality. So I need a motion to approve the policy.
I would make a motion that we approve the policy with the revisions.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Any further discussion? We will now vote on the policy. Motion fails, four no, three yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to make a comment about this. We have to really be careful about allowing so many people to go in someone's personnel file, especially when we demote principals or we demote assistant principals. We're having too many people to look in your personnel file, and we need to be mindful of that, and we need to be very careful, and even as a superintendent. I'm pretty sure if the board changed, you wouldn't want new board members coming in to take a look at your personnel file or your evaluation, especially if there was a board member who gave you negative remarks, and they only look at that negative remark and make a judgment call on you. So I know the motion has passed, but I want to say we need to be very mindful and very careful about folks going in someone's personnel file before we have major lawsuits.
I hate to state the obvious, but it's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Is there, is there an accusation or that principals or administrators are, has gotten some sort of malfeasance? Is that?
Ms. Mackey, if you don't mind me, I'd like for us to move on to the next set of policies. The motion failed, the policy will remain as is. I'd like to move on to Dr. Davis, sir?
Mr. Chair.
The policy failed with the?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve GBJ.
GBJ as the original GBJ?
Yes, sir.
As presented by district staff. So the motion is to approve GBJ as presented by district staff. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any further discussion?
Discussion, if there are concerns, if there are concerns about security, if this policy passes, is it still possible for Dr. Davis to look at his administrative rule to make sure that you have checks and balances in place that make all concerned comfortable?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so do I have any further discussion? We'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes four to two with one abstention. All right, we will now move on to Policy DKC. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're asking for approval to the revisions to Policy DKC, the expense authorization reimbursement. The first draft was provided on June 26th, the second draft was provided on July 18th, and first reading was presented to the board on July 23rd.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the policy revision, DKC, as presented.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? We'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, administration is asking for the approval to the revisions to Policy KFB, Community Use of District Conference Facility, and Policy KF, Community Use of School and District Facilities. The first draft was provided on 6/26/19, the second draft was on July 18th, 2019, and first reading was presented at the last special call board meeting on August 6th.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the policy revisions to KFB, Community Use of District Conference Facility, and the revisions to KF, Community Use of Schools and District Facilities.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
Our vote just came up. But I would like to ask for friendly amendments on Policy KF, Page 2, under Facilities and Fee Schedules, Paragraph 6, at the very end of the sentence is missing a period. And on Page 3, under Proper Treatment of School Facilities, Paragraph 5, references made to Chief of Operations, suggested change to Executive Director of Operations, is that his current title?
And I believe you made that motion the last time for that change to occur.
Actually, it's in there twice, and the second time it was?
I got you.
Not picked up.
Okay, so there's been a friendly amendment?
I'm happy to allow Ms. Agostini's friendly amendment.
Okay, so motion's been made with a friendly amendment and a second. Do we have any further discussion? We can have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. And again, just for clarification, just so we're all clear, that was a? And again, just for clarification, just so we're all clear, that was a approving the policies with the amendments versus last time where we had just an amendment and then the policy. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that. All right, if I can, Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're asking for the approval of the revisions to Section I policies that were presented on August 6th at the special call board meeting. The first draft was provided on June 25th, and first reading was on August 6th.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move that we approve the policies that set forth in Section I. According, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead and finish your motion. I apologize.
Accordingly, policies IA, IB, ID, IE, IG, IHA, IHAA, IHAB, IHAC, IHAD, IHAF, IHAG, IHAH, IHAJ, IHAK, IHAL, IHAN, IHAO, IHAP, IHBA, IHBB, IHBC, IHBEA, IHBF, IHBG, IHBH, IHBIB, IHCA, IHCD, and IHCF.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I was gonna, go ahead, you take Dr. Elkins Johnson first.
Well, are we going in order or just the concerns that I have first?
It's up to you however you want to present them.
Well, I'd rather we go in order just in case someone has some questions.
Okay. So are you, you gonna start?
Well, I'm 10/23. So if someone has something before 10.23, they can go first. If not, I can start. Anyone have?
Ms. Agostini, did you want to go ahead and go?
I do. I have a question on 10/21. Just seeking clarification. On my hard copy that we approved last week, the second paragraph, I believe, was not deleted, and now it is?
Can you, can you press the button, Ms. Gregory? I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you.
And it is redundant, and if you'll notice in all four core subject areas, for consistency, we put that paragraph that is highlighted in yellow.
Okay. And, and I, I picked up on that reading, but my question is more procedural than if it should have been struck through and the board didn't suggest it, who gets to make the suggestion? Because it's my understanding now, when we're doing the first reading, we need to make a motion to get something removed. How is it then that the administration can do it, but the board needs to make a motion to make it happen? So it's more of a procedural question.
Ms. Agostini, I, I believe your question is, is a very good question and a warranted question. And after the first reading, no additional language or adjustment should have been made to this policy prior to presenting it to you again for second reading.
Thank you. My next question is on 10/27.
Okay, I have 10/23.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, just a question. I know we're talking about social studies, education. Who decides what electives we have? And I'm going back when I'm thinking about Preston, who was over at Blythewood High School. And Dr. Davis, you can help me out. The course that he taught, what was that?
It was African-American Studies.
Okay, African-American Studies. Now, we have a few schools that offer that, and some don't. So are we being consistent, or do we allow administration or the district to determine who offers the electives?
I am to be consistent across the high schools. But part of that is Dr. Manigo works with them, and through local board approve courses. Dr. Manigo, you want to add anything?
And just as, just for a piece of information for Dr. Elkins Johnson's question. If a course is approved at a school such as that course, that course is also available to all high schools to teach that course. Whether they have the personnel, or they have, they have placed that course in their class, in their course offerings, is up to individual schools based on the, the design of their school schedules and classes. And so that is something that's replicated throughout the district in multiple, in multiple, um, uh, course offerings, whether it's research, AP research courses, or if it's a specific course to a magnet class, or if it's a specific type of PE course and things of that nature. So there is, there, but it is offered, and the opportunity to teach that course is offered at every school if, if it is approved at one school.
That is correct.
So it is offered, but is it being taught at every school?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And that's up to the principal or the district?
Will you push the button?
Yeah.
Push your button again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
It is often, it, it really varies. It is, it depends on student interest often. So every attempt is made to honor course requests by students. But of course, if there is a course that needs to be taught that is required by the state, those we have to take precedent. So students have to, all students have to take US history. So if there is a small school staff, for example, using African-American history, and I was at Blythewood when that course was created. And it was created because of student interest at Blythewood High School and made available to all the schools. So if there's a student interest and there is the teaching staff, enough students, we, we certainly can't have a class with five students. It's very difficult. Although we do handle some of that virtually, which falls under high school when we can. So we do make every attempt to accommodate students and parents in their interest.
Okay. So it goes back to my question. How would students know, or how would parents know how to make that request or bring it to our attention? And then also, if we don't have the body to teach that course, which I think is so important, and that we offer African-American studies, why can't we offer that as a virtual class?
We do have courses that are offered virtually, and that is, again, based on student interest. And we can accommodate one or two students with regards to that. So it is by request. So we create courses by request, offer courses, as long as, again, we have the same parameters. We have to have a teacher that is, is available to teach that course and willing to teach it. Virtual is above a teacher's contract. So if they do make that request, we do make every attempt to honor it.
Thank you, Dr. Manigo.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I have one for 10.27. It's almost similar to my question before, and this is on world language education. And who or how do we determine which world language is offered? And I'm asking that question because I know that the different high schools offer different world languages. And just a few years ago, we had a concern with Westwood not offering a world language. And parents were coming, asking to allow their students to attend Blythewood High School because Blythewood High School was the closest school that offered that. So how do we determine which world language we offer?
It is, again, very similar to what Dr. Manigo shared with you. It is based on student interest, request, and then also availability of the teacher, the certification of the teacher. And we do make every effort with virtual courses in addition.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I have a question, and, and just seeking clarification. Where, on the same policy, it says the district will offer a world language as an elective. So when you're using the a world language, you're saying one world language. We will have at least one language. Is that what you're, is that what that reads to me?
It is not specifying a number.
Okay, thank you.
It is not specifying a number.
Other questions or comments? All right, we'll take the vote. You have another question?
Yeah, I've got a few more on other policies. I thought you were just as pertains to that policy.
I'm sorry, I know any other questions or comments on Section I?
Yes, on 10/29. I'm, I would ask for a friendly amendment. The last paragraph, first sentence, "Schools will assess the progress of the character education program each year" and change it to "Schools will assess the progress of their character education program", since each individual school is supposed to be establishing their own character education program, as I've read in the policy.
Ms. Agostini, you were kind enough to provide that beforehand. And when I looked at the page before that, the very last paragraph after bullet points, it mentions that each school will have a program of character education. So it's, it's consistent with the paragraph that you're referring to that says, "Schools will assess the progress of the character education program", because they're only going to have one at their school, so.
Each school, my understanding is each school is going to have their own. Is that, is this district-wide, that they're all going to have the same one? Am I misunderstanding that, or each, each school is-
Has their education program.
A character education program. So they would be evaluating, either way it can go. I think it sounds better with their, I'm happy to drop it, but... That's fine. We can move on.
Ms. Agostini, you said you had more?
Yes, I, I'm just wondering on Policy I H A L. My policy is reading that the, any study of religious history and traditions is underlined. Is there a reason for that?
It was, my understanding is it is underlined because it was new. It was added to that paragraph by the South Carolina School Board Association, and that's why it's underlined. Is that correct, Dr. Franklin? It's an insertion.
So should it be colored something? Okay, so that, all right, then I'm good on that. I was just curious. And then I just, I have a question again for clarification on Policy 1040. The second paragraph, last line. "In the case of technical colleges, the area commission of a sponsor that grants its charter." Can just, somebody explain to me what the area of commission?
It's area, it's area, it's area commission. I think you inserted of-
Okay, the area commission, but still, I'm looking for just, if somebody could just explain that to me.
Technical colleges are divided into areas? Are they divided into specific areas?
So it's called an area?
Mm-hmm.
Commission?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on any policies in Section I?
I, I have a, I have a concern that we've added that driver's ed policy in there. I would ask for a friendly amendment to remove that and us vote on that separately. Because again, this is a time where we've lumped all these policies together, and we don't have a driver's ed policy. So I'd like to see that removed and us vote on that separately, so that I can support all of the amendments.
Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, can I get some clarification with regard to the driver's ed policy?
As to, I think we talked last time about there is a proviso every year that has postponed it.
So what you're asking, Mrs. Agostini, is to have it removed so that you can vote on it separately because it's not a permanent item, or because it's-
Because it's, yes, it's not relevant now. So there's a provizio. So why are we putting in a policy that we're not going to implement?
Because it's from year to year. I think we talked about that last week, and so we don't ever know. And the School Board Association put it in here. And again, it is a year to year that there's a proviso. There may not be a proviso the next year.
And my understanding is that it's a holding place. I mean, proviso, just by definition, is a statute that is inserted every year. Some year it may, some years it may be there, some years it's not. But I think keeping it in allows it to be a hold, allows it to be, to be kept there as a holding place for when there is funding to fund it. Is that correct, Ms. Gregory?
And I think I, I read what was in the School Board Manual Handbook to you last week. But again, you're right. It was the recommendation for, from the School Board Association. So that's why we left it in there.
Okay.
Again, I, I would ask for a friendly request to just remove that so we can vote on all the policies and then vote on that separately.
Ms. Mackey, are you accepting or not?
Happy to allow that to be pulled out separately, but I'm happy to allow that, accommodate that. So my policy would be the revision of the policies as stated in Section I with the amendments that have been made, with the removal of Policy I H A N to be voted upon separately. I'm happy to accommodate that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question. I know we don't have driver's education now, but couldn't that come in January? So it's something that probably should remain.
The proviso, we get that when we get the School Board Association handbook every fall. They update us as to the provisos annually.
The provisos?
No, no, no. My question was, if we remove it, and then a school decides that they want to have driver's training, then we will have to come back and add that policy.
So I think the, the idea was to have it removed from the section. We'll vote on that separately. That's to be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll come back to that policy.
Any other questions?
Any other que, any clarity needed on what the motion is at this point? Okay. We have the motion in the second. If I can have the vote at this time. Ms., uh, Ms. Mackey, if you'll just make sure that whatever the motion is on the screen, that it matches.
I will. Oh, dude.
We'll sit back a minute.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, if we can have the vote. Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. I was reviewing.
Okay.
Thank you.
And motion passes seven, zero. If I can have another motion on the driver's education policy?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move that we approve the policy revisions to I H A H world, I'm sorry. Uh, Policy 10.31. That is policy revisions to I H A N, driver training.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? I'm going to give us just one more minute. I think we probably needed a bio break. From Dr. Caution Parker. Can we just give her one minute? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
My only thing, again, I, I don't want to support it because it's something that we're not offering. I would have loved to have seen something stated that it's a provizio and that we go, you know, on, you know, an annual basis, so that people would understand that's why it's not being offered. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I guess we'll go ahead and take the vote at this time. To make it should have be, should have popped up by now, or? Okay.
What are we voting?
We're, we're voting on the driver, to approve the driver's ed policy.
Okay.
Motion passes six to one. All right, next on our agenda, thank you very much, is Item 12.1 Draft Agenda. Dr. Davis? Oh, I'm sorry. Wow. I'm just like skipping past the... I'll sleep good tonight. Oh, all right, 11, New Business, No Action Requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have three policies that Dr. Franklin will bring in before you tonight for first reading. Those policies will be the policies ACA, which is a new policy, and is the equity policy that has been discussed with the board. It is Policy KI, which consists of visitors, and Policy BCB, which is Board Member Conflict of Interest. And that policy is a change to mirror a former policy that we had already, we have already amended. And Dr. Franklin- And Dr. Franklin will share those policies with you and address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Manning, members of the board. Policy ACA, equity, the administration presents for consideration. Understanding that there are unique challenges faced by individual students or by populations of students, the equity policy is a statement of commitment to providing access to resources and supports needed for student success. Having an equity policy in place ensures district administration uses an equity lens when planning, making decisions, and allocating resources.
All right. Any questions?
Just a comment, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I know of the State School Board Association Board that I serve on, this is actually one of the resolutions that the state board wanted to set forth just to ensure that equity is on every school board's radar because not with... Unlike Richland II, not every school board in the state has an emphasis or any kind of a direction with regard to equity. So, this was a statement that was put in place as a resolution from the state board just to ensure that every school board make an effort to address equity.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
I would just also state, from a personal standpoint, I believe equity is extremely important. It's been a focus of mine for quite some time. So, I'm very pleased that the administration is presenting this new policy regarding equity and specifically showing that it is different than equality. So, it's a very good start, and I look forward to seeing how we, as a district, is going to adhere to this policy if it passes. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shad. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Did you pull all three of these policies together? I'm sorry. Or were we just...
Well, this is no action. So, there aren't a discussion. We just had discussion on ACA. We're next being presented with KI.
Well, thank you.
Policy KI is a carryover policy from Section K, which was reviewed in the spring. There were no revisions suggested by the School Boards Association. Changes noted on the draft of the policy or suggestions from district administration.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I have a question. I like this policy, but I think my question is... I know we've had a practice with some of our schools that if parents came in, they have to give a 24-hour notice. So, are we going to share this with principals so they can adhere to what this policy is? Because it does not mention anything about 24-hours policy, practice in order to visit classrooms.
Absolutely, Dr. Elkins Johnson. All new policies and changes to previous policies are shared with district, school-level administrators if it impacts their schools directly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for that. Because therefore, some schools will have to go back and do their handbook. Because in some of the handbooks, particularly, I saw one that stated that it must be 24-hours notice before a parent can come and visit. So, please make sure that principals know to go back and change their handbook as well to match the policy that we have in place.
Did you have another comment?
No.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. Dr. Franklin?
And policy BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest. In May, the board approved revisions to policy GBEA, Conflict of Interest Staff Ethics. Some of the content from GBEA also appears in BCB, specifically language related to hiring of family members of board members and certain district employees. The revisions suggested in BCB brings it in alignment, but the change is already approved in GBEA.
Board members, questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes. Dr. Franklin, I want to make sure I'm clear. You're saying that BCB is going to mirror what's in GBEA? So, that will also change from director to executive level? Because we don't have the revision here. Well, I'm not on a page. I know we've made some revisions to policy GBEA, and you're saying that BCB, the policy that we're talking about tonight, is going to mirror that.
There's content from GBEA that appears in this policy. I think that's in this policy.
Right.
Anything that's in this policy that's also in GBEA is changing.
Okay. And I guess my question would have been, why didn't we see it here? Because we're getting ready to talk about making revisions or talk about approving the first reading. And it's hard to approve the first reading if it's not what we're getting ready to approve. So, it should have come to us with the new changes. No, no. I'm saying... You're saying that some of this is going to mirror that, but it's not a reflection here. Wait. Let me go back to... Give me one second. Let me go back. Because sometimes we get policies that's sent to us, and they say one thing. And then, when we come here to do first reading, it's totally different. So, I want to go back here and see. Okay. What's highlighted in yellow here says, "Or District Office Staff at the Director's Level." But, we changed that to the Executive Director. So, it's not showing here. So, that will be incorrect. No problem.
We need... Wait a minute. I needed an amendment to make that change... A motion to make that change.
Well, it's just mirroring what she...
We still have to...
Okay.
I understand. I still need a motion.
Okay. Well, let me go back to... I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this policy until we get the correct reading of it, before we vote on first reading.
I'd like to second that motion.
All right. Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
And this might not be the appropriate time. I have a question on the policy, not pertaining to what the motion's been made, but a different question. Should we go through this now? Or should...
Let's take the vote if you can bring that question to staff.
Certainly.
Okay. If I can have the vote at this time?
And for clarification, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mackey, I'm sorry. You had a...
If the discussion period is not dispensed with. So, the recommend... The motion, as it stands on the floor, is just for staff to go back to review it to make sure that the language is consistent. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. We'll take the vote. Hand vote. Okay. Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. Franklin. All right. Now, item 12, 12.1, Draft Agenda. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have before you in board docs the draft agenda for the August 27th board meeting, which will be the board meeting immediately preceding the first day of school. We will call to order our board meeting of executive session at 5:30 and begin public session at 6:30, where we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into adult education program. We'll resume our public session at 6:30, have our inspirational moment, the approval of our agenda. We'll also have special recognitions, have the approval of the consent agenda, public participation, our legislative update should there be one, student appeals, voting on executive session items, which will include our student appeals and admission requests into adult ed, an update on the capital improvement, old business action requested, which would be policies ACA, approval of that policy. Policy KI, we will strike policy BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest, and bring that back for old business, no action requested for first reading. We'll have the draft agenda for September the 10th and ask for approval of that draft agenda. And should we need a second public participation, we will do so. Board and superintendent comments. Executive session number two, should there be one, voting on those items should there be a need, and then adjournment.
All right. Board members, any questions or comments on that? All right. We'll move on to item 13.1, which is approval of the draft agenda. If I can have a motion? Yes, ma'am. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the draft agenda items for August 27th.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
Again, I just want to say, I think this is an unnecessary exercise as our agendas frequently change, and we've just seen one example of that change. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just as a point of personal privilege, agenda items will be fluid and change. We have until 24-hours prior to a board meeting to make an agenda final to produce to our public. So, up to that point, the agenda is flexible.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. And respectfully, I do understand that, but I disagree. Again, I think it's an unnecessary exercise. I realize that this is fluid. So, I would like to go back to the former practice of just stating what is going to be presented and not taking a vote, but also allowing the board the opportunity to publicly state what they'd like to see on future agendas versus something to just be added to an upcoming or the following agenda. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir, Ms. Shad.
I'll call for a question. I'll call for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we're ready for the vote at this time. Motion passes six to one. At this time, we'll have... There's nobody signed up for public participation number two. So, we will have board and superintendent comments. If I can start with Ms. Agostini and move to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What a great way to start out the school year by seeing all these teachers and employees recognized. So, that was wonderful. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to clarify some comments that I made last week as there was a misunderstanding. As I've talked to a couple of board members, we were talking about the homework policy, policy IKB. And while I stated clearly three times, my request was for teachers to not assign homework due on a holiday, not over the holiday. My son starts medical school tomorrow. I'm pretty sure it was because of the homework that he did over holidays and over weekends that homework got him where he was going to be. My problem is having homework assigned December 28th or on President's Day. That is due electronically. So, just to clarify, that was my purpose. I'm not here to micromanage teachers, but also to be considerate of families and their circumstances. And that was my request, to not have homework due on holidays. And I do appreciate Dr. Davis approaching me and letting me know about the confusion that I may have caused and that we will continue to look at this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey?
For the people who have to be here, bless you. For the people who choose to be here, we thank you and we appreciate your process, your participation in this process. And I just want to commend Dr. Davis. There are so many things to have gone on this summer, but to commend Dr. Davis on the implementation and staff members and teachers and schools and students and community members who came out to volunteer for the Back to School Bash. So, kudos for them. I know it was a joyful time in the community. So, kudos to Dr. Davis, who spearheaded the effort, and all the people who participated. Kudos on that. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Holmes?
Good evening. I am so excited to share something with you guys. We have also... I have gotten in contact with what's called the Panorama Paper here in Columbia, South Carolina. We have so many students that do such marvelous things and wonderful things that I've kind of felt like we needed to have that... Our voice broadened in the community. So, Dr. Davis and I, we have gotten with the Panoramic Paper, and we will be having that paper do articles about all the great things our students do. We'll be sending in pictures and things like that. And we will also have that paper sent to each school, and it will be available also here in the district office. We want to be able to reach all the community with all the different media aspects. And that's one thing that we felt strongly about. We wanted to put that out there. And also, on a personal note, on my Facebook page, either my personal one or my Facebook, Dr. Holmes School Board Member page, I have started a little section called, "Where Are They Now?" This is just something I personally wanted to do. So, if you have a student that has done, has graduated from our Richland II School District, and they're doing well, and you don't mind sending me their picture and what they're doing, I have been highlighting them on the pages. Because, again, we have so many kids that are doing so well. So far, I've highlighted a young lady who owns a dance studio, and she's doing well. She's a national winner with her dance studio. I've highlighted a doctor who... She's now a medical student. She's a medical doctor here in Columbia during her residency. I've highlighted my own child, who is also RN at the Children's Hospital, has now moved up to be a supervisor there. I've highlighted a musician who has... Who's now working back in our school district. And I've highlighted some of our students graduated from Clemson, who is now going to come and be a first-year teacher in our district. These are the kind of things that I'd like to see us continue to put out. We get a lot of negative press sometime, and I think it's important that we have served every avenue to make sure that they know that the students here in Richland School District II, we are doing exactly what we say we're going to do, and that's educate them. So, I'm excited about that. Find me on Facebook. Send me your child's pictures. Send me the story. And I'm just going to put it out there. And I'm excited about the Panoramic Paper. And also, I enjoyed coming to... Participating in the Back to School Bookback. It was hot as heck out there, but it was fun. But, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Caution Parker?
I'd like to first say congratulations to all the award recipients this evening. We had quite a few, and it was just... That's just good to see. And also, special congratulations and kudos to Dr. Davis regarding his evaluation and his contract, and look forward to working with you at least three more years.
Thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes. Want to say congratulations to all of those who received awards this evening, especially our educational office professionals. Also, want to say to Dr. Grant and her team, kudos to you guys for the Back to School Bash. It was awesome. I planned to come and work one hour, but I just had too much fun and was truly enjoying it in pain and stayed the entire time. So, just thank you for your vision and your putting that together and your team. So, thank you so much. Also, if I'm not mistaken, I think today is Libby Roof's birthday. Libby, am I correct about that? So, happy birthday to you, Libby. Happy birthday to you. And then, finally, I want to say to Dr. Davis, I am one of your number-one supporters, have been from the start, will continue to be. Unfortunately, tonight, I could not show that because of the fact the board decided to lump everything together instead of giving us an opportunity to vote. And again, I would say this. I supported everything on your contract except for the supermajority. So, I want you to know, although it looked as if I did not show support tonight, you have my support. You always have, and you always will. And you're one of the best superintendents that I've ever worked with. So, thank you for your service, and I look forward to continuing to working with you.
Ms. Shad?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First, I'd like to give congratulations to those who had recognitions tonight. I do agree with Ms. Roof to start the year off right with recognitions. And I would encourage everyone to do their best. Welcome back for our returning students. Welcome to the district for our new students and parents. Welcome back to our instructional staff that started today. I know we're going to have another great year, and we are striving to be premier. And also, congratulations to Ms. Mackey and Dr. Holmes in achieving their levels with boardmanship. their levels with boardmanship. And last but not least, Dr. Davis, congratulations on the highest level that was available, the distinction of being a distinguished evaluation. And in light of that, in terms of moving forward, I was happy to approve the contract as it was. I thought that the process was fair, that there was enough time to do it, there was enough time to give, to receive input in the meetings. And so I commend you, Dr. Davis, that we were able to come to an agreement on this contract, and it's, as we know, it's things that we can look at on a year-to-year basis, and so I was in full support of the contract, and I hope that that was evident. So thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Today was an exciting day in Richland School District Two. As school administrators, welcome back our teachers. I know many, many teachers gave up time during the summer break to prepare for the nineteen twenty school year. On behalf of the entire Richland two family, on behalf of our board, we want to say thank you for your dedication to ensuring that premier starts here. The official first day of school for our students is Wednesday, August the twenty first. However, sixth graders at our middle schools and freshmen at our high schools get a jump start the day before during Step Up to Six and Fresh Start. The district's first back to school bash, which has been mentioned by many of our board members, with congratulations to Dr. Grant and her outstanding team and staff, and also to those number, the many, many volunteers that helped this to be a tremendous success. I gave Dr. Grant a vision, but I got out of the way. Periodically, she would check in with me and ask me, were we moving in the right direction, and I would say, yes, make it as big as possible. We wanted it to be a party, and I can't wait till next year to see what it's going to be next year. But we were able to give out fifteen hundred book bags filled with school supplies. This was definitely a huge team effort, and I wanted to convey my thanks to all the sponsors, the volunteers, and the organizers for making this happen, and we took additional supplies and shared them with other locations around our community for those individuals who may not have had an opportunity to come out to receive those, those school supplies. So we're looking forward to that again next year. And I just want to take a few moments just to say thank you to our board. I am often humbled by our board, and this is one of those moments, for entrusting the future and the welfare of this wonderful district to me. It was always a dream of mine to serve as the leader of Richland School District Two, and although from time to time there are a number of challenges, it is something that I feel that I was called to do, and I am so grateful to have a board that supports, supports those efforts and supports me. I can't thank you enough to our board. I can't thank them enough for the confidence that they have in me, but also for their wise counsel that they give me on a day-to-day interaction with them. And so I say that together, we have accomplished much, and we have shown tremendous progress over the last two and a half years that we have been working together, because I consider that a half a year as superintendent-elect. And for the vision that they had to put this in place, and every day I work extremely hard to make sure that they look good and are successful for coming up with that vision of, for having superintendent-elect process and by putting me and selecting me to lead this district. But I would be remiss if I didn't also say that we wouldn't be anything, we would not be successful if it wasn't for our students and their commitment to being premier, if it wasn't for our parents and their commitment to being the premier supporters and the biggest advocates of their children and their education, if it wasn't for our teachers for being premier educators and being committed to the process of continuously improving and being the best that they can be for our teach, for our students every day, to our administrators who give, to ensure that our students are learning at an optimal level and in a safe and secure environment, while, all while supporting the teachers and the students in their efforts to grow, and most importantly, to our community. But my executive staff is where I would be remiss if I wouldn't say, they help and they do a lot, and I'm so thankful for having the best executive staff in this, in the state, and to our community for entrusting us and giving us the support that they give us each and every day. We are a tremendously blessed district, and we should be humbled by those blessings that we have, and not take them for granted, and I am looking forward to the next several years to where we will, and see how we will continue to grow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was going to make comments, but I think they've all been said. Dr. Davis, congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Look forward to a great school year, and I want to congratulate my daughter, Taylor Manning, for her high school adventure that's in front of her. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.